I'm going to go ahead and move to a moment of silence for our chairman. As many of you can tell, we've got a sash over the seal behind the dais today. And we will have it there for the month of April in remembrance and memorial tribute to our late chairman, Supervisor Richard Elias. So I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by a pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Christie.
Please join me in the pledge for our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, another friend of ours, and that's Rusty Garrett, who was a friend to many members of this board, as well as Pima County, and was always very charitable in his givings to different organizations in this community. So to Rusty and his family, our condolences as well.
Mr. Chairman, I share those condolences to family and to Mary. I know Rusty was an avid horseman, and we certainly will miss him and his generosity.
And Supervisor Christie?
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'd like to make an advisement to both you and the clerk when you deem it appropriate.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and just read the changes to the agenda, and then we'll go ahead and do that. On page two, item number four, the presentation, Supervisor Miller has requested this item be removed from the agenda. And on page four, item 17, franchise license permit correction to the zone and report, now reads a Series Six bar permitted in conjunction with Series 10, which exists on property. This Series Six is in support of the Series 10. So that, without objection, those will be the changes to the agenda. Supervisor Christie, your point of personal privilege.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair and Clerk of the Board, Castaneda, I want to advise you both that when this board reaches consent, agenda item number eight, I will be recusing myself.
Madam Clerk, if you could please make a note of that, consent, agenda item eight. All right. Now I'll go ahead and move to addendum item one, the presentation proclamation, a memorial honor and tribute to our late chairman, Richard Elias. And I'd like to do it this way. We have a short two-minute video that we'd like to show and will make available on our website and social media streams after this meeting. We'll then go ahead and do the proclamation. And after the proclamation, I'm going to ask any of the board members who would like to make comments to make comments at that point in time. Taylor.
What we have is the place that we all share. And that's an important issue for all of us to remember, because we share peaceably, we share in a friendly way now. That hasn't always been true either, but it's an important facet of how we've come together as a community, how we continue to grow as a community, and how we respect the footprints of others that have come before us. Have some fun, but also think about our past, think about our heritage, think of how people used to live here in Tucson. When you look out there at the desert, think about what a hardship it was, and all the beautiful things that our families and people have brought us. Bienvenidos a todos, muchisimas gracias. We love having our families here. We love seeing you all together. Have a great time, enjoy the sun, enjoy the day. Let's think about the past, too. And so there's a lot of footprints out there. There's a lot of footprints to follow. There's a lot of thoughts that have gone on along that trail. There's a lot of messages of great importance about family, about tradition, about how native people lived here, and the thoughts that the native people find. Remember that we gathered this morning, remember that we shared some caring about them and their lives and our future and the children who will come, and that this morning we talked about respect being a very important part of that whole discussion. Have a great time, guys. Enjoy it.
Whereas the Pima County Board of Supervisors Chairman, Richard Elias, was immensely proud of his personal heritage as a fifth-generation Tucsonian and his Southern Arizona historical lineage going back seven generations, all of which contributed to his roles as a loving husband, caring father, obedient son, affectionate brother, faithful public servant, dedicated community advocate, admirable mentor, and loyal friend. And whereas a tireless advocate and champion of courageous causes was best known for expressing his Latino heritage and pride by responding to the attendance roll call of each Board of Supervisors meeting with "presente," which became a signature expression and will be sorely missed. And whereas Chairman Richard Elias represented District Five since February 2002, when he was appointed to fill the seat vacated by now Congressman Raul Gahaba, was victorious in five elections and had filed to run again in 2020. He proudly served the city of South Tucson, Chicanos por la Causa, and Pima County prior to joining the Board of Supervisors. And whereas Supervisor Elias served as chairman of the Pima County Board of Supervisors at the time of his untimely passing on March 28, 2020, a leadership position he was appointed to by his colleagues in 2018. He also proudly served as chairman from 2006 to 2010. And whereas Chairman Elias was also known for his sense of style, whether it was his preference of an open collar or the use of a bowler tie, his time-honored mantra, "Resist and Much Love," truly reflected his passion as a music aficionado and fervent fan of the Grateful Dead, Los Lobos, The Clash, and Bob Marley. And whereas Chairman Elias represented his district with distinction and is known as being a people's champion for many social justice causes, including advocating for working families, marginalized communities, and rank-and-file employees. He was committed to issues related to neighborhood reinvestment, affordable housing, the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, quality healthcare, unemployment, and training, which reflected his desire of making Pima County a much better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore be it resolved that a very grateful Pima County and his colleagues on this Board of Supervisors do hereby convey our most heartfelt condolences to his wife, Emily, his daughter, Luce, his brother, Albert, and his wife, Sarah, his sister, Anna, his nieces and nephews, Elena, Ariana, Matt, and Ben, as well as his entire family on this very deep and personal loss. Each of you can remain proud that Richard's life was like radiant light that shone on so many in their time of greatest need. Be it further resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors wishes to honor legacy of our dear friend, brother, and colleague by proclaiming the month of April 2020 to be a memorial honor and tribute to Chairman Richard Elias. Be it further resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors directs all county administrators and departments to establish and recommend to this body an appropriate memorial honoring Chairman Elias to be celebrated at a time and place appropriate for such a gathering of remembrance and reflection. Having read the proclamation, I so move its approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those against, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. So final line passed and adopted the seventh day of April 2020. Supervisor Bronson?
I don't know. Just pause, mi amigo. You will be missed.
Anyone else? Anyone else? In that case, I'll go. The Friday before his passing, he and I were on the phone. And we talked about what was going on. We talked about each of you. We talked about his family, his wife, his daughter. And he had such concern and compassion for each one of us. And he was concerned for each of you. And one of the greatest blessings was that our partying to each other was, "I love you, my brother." Which was probably one of the greatest gifts that I could have. And we will miss our brother, Richard. Because like all brothers, sometimes you loved them a lot more than you liked them. And Richard was no exception to that rule. And I talked to his brother, Albert. He had a gift for driving each of us individually nuts. And I remember Richard and I went back to when I was about 21. And back then, he was a little thinner. And both of us would wear white shirts and ties. And we used to belong to an organization that would have weekly meetings in the Ward One office. And people nicknamed us twins, because we were the only two that showed up every week with white shirts and ties. And so occasionally, if you heard us in the back, occasionally we'd go back and reminisce and say, "Hey, twin." And then there was the time, I remember the shortly after I was appointed to the board, he, Luce, and I went to lunch at TGIF Fridays on Broadway. And I reminded Luce of that in the phone call last week. Where the thing we both most remember is that we had for dessert a plate called Earthworms. Yeah, Ally, that was appropriate. And obviously, the earth was actually crumbled Oreo cookies. And we laughed. And one of the things that I treasure most was his quirky sense of humor and the stupid, stupid things that we would laugh at. So if we remember anything, let's remember the moments of levity, the moments of laughter, the moments where he drove us crazy and then made us laugh again. Or most of all, the moments that he was the only one that laughed because it wasn't really that funny. I will treasure those memories always, my brother, until we meet again. Any of you have anything else you'd like to say?
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
I don't think I could add anything as eloquently as you spoke.
Thank you, Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Bronson?
I spoke with him the Friday also, and we talked about COVID-19. And I think in honor of his memory, we should do what he wanted us to do, and that was shelter in place. And if you're going out, wear face masks. He was very, very concerned, as I was. So I would hope that members of this board and this administration, as well as the general public heed his advice and shelter in place.
Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I put up a post that kind of my experience with Richard is... We argued probably more than anyone up here, disagreed more than anyone up here, and did it passionately, both of us, because we both believed very strongly and very passionate about our causes. And the one thing that usually happened after every single board meeting, we'd walk away, crack a joke, always commented, as you said, Richard always wore nice ties, and he always had something cool that he was wearing, and I'd always comment on that. And he, you know, he always made me laugh. And I really enjoyed the time that he was sitting to my right. We had a lot of fun. He had a wicked sense of humor, as everyone knows. And he will be missed. You know, he did care. And he and I were on opposite sides of the political spectrum, but he truly believed in what he believed in, as I did in mine, and I think we, I hope, we respected each other over that. And, you know, very sad, too young, and he will be very missed.
While unconventional, I'm going to go ahead and exercise the chairman's prerogative if there's a staff member who would like to say anything. Ms. Alkaberry?
Vice Chairman and other members of the board, I talk to Richard probably three times a day over the last several weeks. And you could always tell that you were getting toward the end of the week, and in particular Fridays, was the time that he was the most relaxed. And typically, the phone call would be about 5:00, 5:15. And we'd chat for a good 20 minutes about what was going on and what was being done. You could tell that Fridays, and mostly, he was pretty relaxed. And so that's what, you know, I remember him from. And then the other thing that, when I had things that I needed to tell him, I would call him. And I think he was beginning to dread those phone calls, because obviously, it was a pretty serious and continues to be a serious situation. So he will be, like I say, very missed and very passionate about his causes, and for that, I respect him deeply.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Alkaberry. I'm going to go ahead and move to the addendum, agenda item number six, District Five Supervisor, which is the discussion action regarding the appointment of the new District Five Supervisor. I will remind each of us of the requirements. The applicants for the position need to meet the following requirements. It has to be of the same political party, which in this case is Democrat, registered to vote in the district, District Five, a resident of Arizona, at least 18 years of age, and able to read and write English. So I'm going to open the floor to discussion. Supervisor Christie?
I would assume, Mr. Vice Chair, that we would follow tradition and protocol, at least the tradition and protocol I've been exposed to on the few years that I've been on the board, that there be a notice of application process where applicants may apply for the position, that there be some sort of a venue, albeit under different circumstances with the COVID-19 virus, but I'm sure that something could be arranged where some forums, such as the League of Women Voters, could conduct a public symposium of sorts, that the applicants can express their qualifications and desire to fill the position. And then at some point, perhaps the applicants could speak directly to the board, and we would be given the opportunity to review all the applicants to make sure that there is full transparency in this process, and that all people that are qualified under the guidelines that you just stipulated have the opportunity to apply. And I would look forward very much to that process to be in place.
And Supervisor Christie, to that point, what I would say is that during your tenure here, what we've done is legislative appointments, the process of which is dictated very specifically under ARS of getting the precinct committee involved in that process. And Mr. Flag, please correct me if I'm wrong in my interpretation of the law. In our case, however, we actually, all it says in the law is that the remaining members shall appoint. Should there be a tie, the clerk of the board does cast the deciding vote. And the appointment of a board member has only happened within my lifetime and memory, 2003, which was myself, 2002, which was Supervisor Elias, 1997, which was Supervisor Carroll, and 1988, which was... Mr. Flag, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, your interpretation of the law is correct, yes.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bronson?
I, given that family has expressed a wish to have Betty Viegas appointed, and we have, no, and the letters of interest that had been submitted have been withdrawn, I would move that rather than go through a process, since we have issues, rather urgent issues to deal with, and we need a full board, I would move to appoint Betty Viegas today.
I'll second that motion. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie?
Mr. Vice Chairman, just to reiterate that perhaps there are statutes that stipulate what the responsibilities of this board are in this regard. That's fine, but I look at other positions such as Justice of the Peace and constables, and I think those are terrific formats to utilize in this case. And to Supervisor Bronson's point, yes, this is a very difficult and a serious time, and we do need to fill the vacancy. However, we should also exhibit some responsibility to make sure that the applicants are allowed to apply and that there be time given for that application process, and that this board take a very discerning approach to who fills that seat, as it is a very important seat during some very serious times. And that's what I believe is a basis of transparency in government, and I think it's important that we use those models that have worked in the past in other venues for this particular issue before us.
Anyone else have any discussion on the item? Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the statutes for appointing a supervisor are different than the statutes for Justice of the Peace. And I just wanted to make that point, that there is a difference, and I think you just clarified what the requirements were.
Right.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Father Diaz?
Aye. By your vote, three to one, we've appointed Betty Viegas to fill the unexpired term of Chairman Richard Elias. Congratulations, Betty. Please contact the clerk's office as soon as you can, because I'm sure you're watching, to fill out your financial disclosure and your oath of office. We'll go ahead and move on to item number five, organization of the board discussion. Supervisor Bronson?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would move to appoint you as chair and myself as vice chair.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, you also have acting chair on that. Are you going to wait until Ms. Viegas appears on the board? Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and move to item number five on the regular agenda. There's three proclamations and three supervisors. So I'll go ahead and just in no particular order. Item number five, the Fair Housing Month. Chair with an entertaining motion to approve? Motion, a second, to approve? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. I'm just going to go from my right to the left. Supervisor Bronson, if you could, please do the Fair Housing Proclamation, and just read it from your chair, please.
Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 ensure full and fair access to housing opportunities. And whereas April 2020 marks the 52nd anniversary of the signing of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas 2020 is the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and complaints of discrimination based on disability account for 64.3% of fair housing complaints lodged with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And whereas shelter is a basic human need, and when shelter is denied, the quality of human life is greatly diminished. And whereas people must not be denied equal access to and enjoyment of housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, gender, disability, familial status, or criminal histories. And whereas Pima County recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities, and applauds the ADA for adding disabled persons as a protected class of people. And whereas April is designated nationally as Fair Housing Month, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2020 to be Fair Housing Month, and encourages all of Pima County residents to work for tolerance and equal housing opportunities in our community. Passed and adopted the seventh day of April 2020. And I know if Richard were here with us, Richard would be doing this.
Most certainly. It was one of his favorite proclamations every year, and it was part of what he was involved with and all about. Next, we'll move into item number six, a presentation proclamation, well, regarding Census Month in Pima County, item number six, Chair with an entertaining motion? Motion, a second, to approve? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. I'm going to ask Supervisor Miller to please read that one from your chair, if you could, please.
Whereas the United States Constitution mandates that a census of the nation's population be conducted every 10 years, and the 2020 census is based on residency on April 1, 2020. And whereas it is vital that all households in Pima County complete and submit a census form, as every resident counts and deserves to be counted. And whereas the census will determine how the federal government distributes $400 billion in funding, an estimated $3,000 a year per person counted in Pima County, for critical community services, housing, transportation, healthcare, economic development, and other vital needs. And whereas census figures determine how the state of Arizona distributes road funding and other state taxes and fees to counties, cities... and other state taxes and fees to counties, cities, and towns. And whereas census data ensure that fair congressional, legislative, county, and city electoral districts can be drawn. And whereas it is essential that accurate data be collected from groups of people who are historically difficult to count, including young children, low-income individuals, military personnel, those fluent in a language other than English, ethnic and racial minorities, and rural residents. And whereas census information is confidential and protected from dissemination by law. And whereas planning, outreach, local government involvement, and community education are required to ensure that the census count is as accurate as possible. And whereas Pima County participates in the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee and strives to encourage every resident to complete the census questionnaire online, over the telephone, or by postal mail. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2020 to be Census Month in Pima County, passed and adopted the seventh day of April 2020.
Thank you Supervisor Miller. Next, we move on to item number seven, National Service Recognition Day. Chair with an attendant motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Supervisor Christie, if you could do the honors, please.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the nation's character and central to how we meet challenges. And whereas the nation's cities, towns, and counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants serve in more than 45,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources that strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service, which funds AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps, shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and joins with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day, Recognition Day on April 7th, 2020. Now therefore it be resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 to be National Service Recognition Day and encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their community, passed and adopted the seventh day of April 2020.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Next, we move on to item number eight, public comments. For those that submitted public comments, those that would like to, please submit them to c o b underscore mail at pima.gov. They are sent to the board on a daily basis, so we do get to read them. We are working our way through trying to figure out a process for being able to do them live as well, but please understand they are entered into the record as well. Again, c o b underscore mail at pima.gov. Now we'll move on to Flood Control District. Board Supervisors, sitting as other boards, Flood Control District, item eight, nine, and 10, or eight, excuse me, nine, 10, 11.
Nine, 10, and 11.
Yes.
If nobody wishes to divide the question, I will move those items in, including Resolution 2020 FC1 and 2020 FC2.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I have a question on number nine.
Please, go ahead.
That I would like to clarify.
I'll second the motion, and please go ahead.
Okay. I'm not sure in our policies and procedures, this gives the flood district, I assume it's the director, it just says flood district, the authority to contract up to $2 million without coming back before the board, and also they can do $200,000 at their own discretion. Is that in the policies and procedures?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, it's the procurement director, and what it is is up to $2 million for any single job order. And those will vary depending upon the type of work being done. Most of the work that's being, has been done already in the previous has all been basically the removal of sedimentation from the major river system. So this just allows, the procurement director, once the flood control district identifies a project, then the procurement director will take that and then have it bid among the selected job order contractors. The procurement director then makes the award to the lowest bidder.
Okay. It, it does not say that in the background, it says the flood district specifically, so I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Supervisor Christie. Oh, sorry, okay. Any other discussion? Here are none. The motion before us is to approve item nine through 11 and Resolutions 2010 FC1 and FC2. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Sitting as board supervisors, approval consent calendar, other than item number eight, does anyone wish to divide the question, or take items separately?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like both item eight and nine to be voted on and discussed separately.
Okay. Chair with an attendant motion to approve consent in its entirety, except for item nine and eight.
I make the motion.
Second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Supervisor Christie.
I'll move...
Hang on. Please let the record reflect that Supervisor Christie has left the dais.
I'll move item eight.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
The question I have on this one is that this is being awarded and it probably just needs some clarification. There's a, I understand when you buy a vehicle, it's under warranty, you're going to be doing oil changes, that kind of thing, and those spark plugs, that we have to have those, but some of the items listed in here are like transmission assemblies for $3,000 that, I just look, for example, the first one for the $183,000 for Mr. Klick's submittal, he's got these items on here, and I can't imagine you'd be replacing for a vehicle that's under warranty, that you would be replacing a transmission. So those are, those are items that I've always had a question on this because it says to keep them under warranty, and so we're using OEM parts, I understand that, and for oil changes and routine maintenance, I get it, but doing a transmission change is not routine maintenance for a vehicle under warranty. And there are several other items under there as well. It's not just that one, it's all of them that have those kind of items. So if you could explain that, why those would be on the list even.
Ms. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I think it is for when they are actually not under warranty. So that's, I think, the difference, and so, again, I'm looking through it to see, but I would believe that it is for all the vehicles and the repairs, the significant ones where they're not under warranty. We can clarify that if you'd like. One of the things we've done here is obviously not have the staff, and Ray would probably be the best, or the procurement director. If you want to, we can ask the procurement director or Ray to come down or provide the information.
I...
Or we could just, two options, either you can continue it, or we can write you a follow-up memo to basically clarify that I believe this is for non-warranty work.
That's what makes sense, but it says to provide county with OEM automotive parts to repair and maintain county vehicles and equipment while maintaining the manufacturer's warranty. This was the same issue I had with it last year, is that it sounded like, and it appeared, and it was stated, that it was for vehicles under warranty, which made no sense. I mean, I understand oil changes and like that aren't, but for all of these big-ticket items. So if this is for, if you're saying this is for items that are not under warranty, if we could get that clarification, I would support this, but it's, it isn't real clear according to the documentation presented to the board, or if you want to put that on the record, that is for vehicles not under warranty.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, maybe, Dan, do you know?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, I believe that there are two parts of the contracts with the providers, some for the vehicles and the maintenance under, under, under the warranty, and then some for additional maintenance that might be provided, as Mr. Huckleberry has indicated, for those specific provisions that are not under warranty. If that's not clear, we're happy to provide that clarification. If you wanted to continue this even to the Thursday meeting, we can provide that language that clarifies that specifically.
That would be good, because I would approve it if I had that language here, but this, this isn't real clear, and last year it was even less clear.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, we can get you something before Thursday's meeting.
If that's it, I could support this. I'll withdraw my motion, and then we can continue in this Thursday's meeting.
Do it Thursday.
Chair with an attendant motion then to continue this item to the Thursday meeting of this week.
So moved.
Motion in a second to continue item number eight on the consent calendar, so we can get the answers to Supervisor Miller's question to this Thursday. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Supervisor Christie, if you could please join us back on the dais. Feel like Chuck Berry. All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Supervisor Miller.
Well, I'll move the item.
Motion, okay, I'll second the item for discussion sake. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be not voting in support of this because it's a cost-plus contract, and I don't think we should be using cost-plus contracts for this type of effort. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you, we just finished the consent. I see our attorneys in the room right now. I'm going to go ahead and move to the addendum, item executive session, item one and two. Chair with an attendant motion to go into exec session.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. We are in executive session. Moving back to order, we are on executive sessions, item number two. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Executive session, item two involves a proposed settlement of a claim filed by Ronald Lewis. The recommended settlement is $200,000 to resolve all of the plaintiff's claims against Pima County. County Attorney's Office recommends approval of the proposed settlement.
Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item number three on the addendum agenda. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Executive session, item three on the addendum involves a proposed settlement in Pima County versus James M. Nelson et al. Pima County Superior Court case number C-20195755. This is an eminent domain case, and the proposed settlement is $12,247 in total just compensation, including interest. County Attorney's Office recommends approval of the proposed settlement.
Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number three and the county attorney's recommendation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nay, all those in favor, all those against, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving back to the regular agenda, item number 13 on page three, petition for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move the item.
Motion, second, to approve the item. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those against, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item number 14.
Move the item.
Motion, second, to approve item number 14. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to hearings, franchises, licenses, and permits.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie.
I have a, an issue on this that I think needs to be addressed. Many of these hearing, or, excuse me, permits were submitted prior to the coronavirus issue, probably sometime before, and the fees have already been paid for these. Most definitely, they will not occur, and my concern is, what is the process to these entities and organizations that have already paid for these permits? Is there some kind of mechanism in place where they could either be refunded, or it could be set aside and utilized, should they reapply at a future time when it's safe to do so? So I don't want anybody to be double-charged for these, and either there should be a refund allowance, or some sort of abeyance where they could hold what they've paid into it, so it's there, should they decide to reapply.
And I could also go, Mr. Chairman, to the consent agenda, numbers 23 and 24.
Consent or addendum?
That we've already approved.
Yeah. Okay, and I failed to mention item number 15. It says the applicant requests the item be removed from the agenda due postponement of the event. But considering you brought up the issue, and I think it's a, we need an answer for that, Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, obviously, these are on the agenda for approval. What we will understand is that those that cannot occur and won't occur, we need to look at the fees, either refund them, or basically indicate that if they apply again on a different date, that fee will be used for that. Let us do a little research, write a particular policy for the board on this subject, so you can consider it and approve that, and then we can treat them all the same.
All right, any further discussion? Chair, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve items number 16 through 21.
Second.
All those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it.
And that's as 17 was amended, so your just point of information.
As amended, correct. Okay, and now we've got item number 22, staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carmine Debonis, this is an application in front of you for rezoning of property on La Choya, south of River Road, and this is a request to rezone to CB2 in order to allow for a coffee shop, taproom, and restaurant. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff both have recommended approval, and there have been no public comments to date.
Okay. I believe on this item, we actually have two speakers on the phone. Let me call them in the order that they appear on my list. Mr. Jeff Stanley, are you on the call?
I am, yes, I'm the engineer.
Okay, go ahead and just identify yourself, sir, and please proceed with your comments.
Okay, my name's Jeff Stanley. I live at 3710 East High Cortez, and we put this plan together, the zoning, it's basically a connection to the bike path on the River Walk there, so we feel like it's a really good project. So I don't have any other comments unless I have some questions to answer for you guys.
Other questions from the board? Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, in the background material, first of all, this is very unusual, that Unisource Energy is actually doing private development, and it said the property will be conveyed to private ownership in the background material. Who is that property being conveyed to, and when?
Mr. Stanley?
It's going to Mike and Sean Baird of Baird Construction. They're buying the project from Unisource.
And, okay, so they are...
I believe he's on...
They are in the process of purchasing this property? I'm just curious why they didn't purchase the property first and come for the rezoning versus Unisource Energy doing the rezoning.
I guess if the chance that, that it wasn't approved, then they wouldn't, they would have property they couldn't use, essentially, they're hinged on purchasing the property, then they're, but they're going forward with it.
And Supervisor Miller, Mike Baird is also on the phone, and he'll be our next speaker.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to ask Mike Baird to please come on the phone. Mr. Baird, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Please identify yourself and make your comments for the record, please.
My name's Michael Baird. I live at 6600 East Placito Laja. My son and myself are, have been going through the process of rezoning this for almost two years, with the intent of developing a small little retail center that's going to, I think, very positively impact the loop. We are avid cyclists, both of us, and we're going to have a patio at the one, at the east end, or, I'm sorry, the west end of the property, is we want a coffee shop and restaurant and some other service-type businesses. But we, we've had it under escrow with the intent that it's only worth purchasing if it's rezoned for our use, so with this approval, then we will be closing the lot within the next 30 days, so.
Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I think this question is for staff. We had a situation, it wasn't that long ago, where Pima County was going to rezone a property on behalf of a private purchaser of the property before, and we've all voted unanimously against that. I'm just curious about a process, or what is the county policy related to doing this type of activity? Because previously, we voted unanimously not to approve, and I don't know, I mean, I understand that the private investor wants to protect himself in the event that the zoning doesn't get approved, but is this common? I mean, I've never seen this before, I've never seen it approved before.
Mr. Debonis?
Yes, this is a very common way to, to purchase the land.
Excuse me, excuse me, that was a question to staff?
Chairman, Supervisor Miller, I think admittedly, it's not common to see it in this particular format, where you have Unisource Corporation making application. I think in general, there are land transactions that occur, sales that occur contingent upon the property being rezoned, so I think that that happens maybe more commonly than may be foreseen or able to be seen in the transaction. The case that you had mentioned about the county rezoning property, I think the difference there is that we were the property owner, Pima County, we were the applicant, we worked as the consultant, if you will, with the neighbors. There was objection voiced by those neighbors, and the board felt uncomfortable with the amount of protest, and therefore voted to unanimously deny the rezoning. The board did get presented with, on that Pima County property, a comprehensive plan amendment, which was approved by the board preceding the rezoning case. So I think that the contingent nature of this is not entirely unusual. I think it may not be noticeable in those other instances where it happens as this one is because of Unisource's involvement.
I think typically, and I remember that one very well, it was unanimously denied because of the fact that Pima County did not have a buyer in place. I think this is very unusual, in that the actual ownership, whoever is, whoever, you know, the purchaser of this property, we typically see their name as the applicant, and if it's denied, they, their purchase of the property is contingent upon that. This is very unusual. I, I will go ahead and move to approve this item, but I think it's something that I think we need to address down the road. You know, if we're, if they're purchasing the property contingent upon this approval, they should be applying for the rezoning in their name. At least, that's been our practice in the past, because this does happen, so. So I'm going to move to close the public hearing and approve rezoning P-19RZ00008, Unisource Energy Corp., North La Choya Boulevard, rezoning with, subject to the standard and special conditions as approved by the zoning commission and as approved by the staff. Second.
Motion, a second, to approve item number 22 and close the public hearing, obviously with the standard and special conditions as approved by the zoning commission and staff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item number 23, staff report.
Chairman, members of the board, this is a request to rezone a little over half an acre of St. Phillips Plaza at River and Campbell from CB1 local business into CB2 general business. The areas being requested for rezoning are outdoor spaces that have been utilized for farmer's market and outdoor music and other type of event venues. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff have recommended approval, subject to standard and special conditions. And I'll note, there is a letter of support from the Campus Farms Neighborhood Association, and one letter of objection has been received from an individual resident.
All right, I've got three speakers on, or are there going to be comments, Supervisor Miller? Okay, first, I'm going to call in the order that appears on my list, Michael Marks, please identify yourself and give your comments.
Yeah, this is Michael Marks, and prepared to offer some comments when appropriate.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So we find all of the rezoning conditions acceptable. We, actually, Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have any objectors, and actually, I'm surprised to hear that there is one now, I have not seen that letter. We have the letter of support from Bonnie Polis, the chairman or the president of the Campus Farms Neighborhood Association. That's the neighborhood from which the complaints regarding the music noise level came from, and after we hired a firm to do a sound study, and then put together a plan for mitigating the noise level, we presented that to Ms. Polis. She was satisfied personally, she went back and she spoke with neighbors within that area, and they too were able to indicate that they were supportive, and so as a result, Ms. Polis wrote the letter of support. She showed up at the Planning and Zoning Commission and expressed that support. So those are the questions, the comments I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Supervisor Miller? And let me ask, Mr. Marks, are you on speakerphone by any chance?
I am, well...
Any chance, any chance you could take us off speakerphone, there's a really horrible echo on our end.
I apologize for that. Is this better?
Thank you so much. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions for Mr. Marks, but I do have a question of, who, who wrote the letter of objection?
Mr. Debonis?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, it is an individual by the name of Peter J. Vinton, and he indicates that he is a property owner near the area being rezoned, and he indicates he votes against the rezoning, and this was an email received by the clerk of the board dated Friday, April 3, and that was distributed as additional agenda material.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no questions for Mr. Marks, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next speaker, and that would be Thomas Spandarian, I'm sorry if I butchered your name. Are you online? No, he's apparently not on the line at this point. Okay, I'll go ahead and move to the next one, and then go back to him in case he comes back, and that would be Grant Kerger. Mr. Kerger, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm not sure if I'm unmuted yet or not.
You are. Please identify yourself, and please proceed with your comments.
Hi, my name is Grant Kruger. I live at 5700 North Barasca Avenue. I'm the operator of Union Public House Reforma Modern Mexican and Proof Artisanal Pizza and Pasta in St. Phillips Plaza. We are the primary reason for this particular rezoning, as for 30 years, St. Phillips Plaza has done live music events with the Jazz Society and a farmer's market in the plaza. And it was brought to our attention that this may be in violation of CB1 zoning, and so we ended up working collectively with both members of the Neighborhood Association and with Chris Poirier and Tom Draskowski to draft a plan to rezone, and hopefully this is... hopefully this is acceptable to you guys, if there's any questions, feel free to shoot them my way.
Are there any questions from the board? None, thank you, Mr. Kruger, is our previous speaker on? No, it appears it's not, so what discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further speakers on this item, I'd like to move to close the public hearing and approve the rezoning P-19RZ-00013, St. Phillips Plaza, North Campbell Avenue rezoning, subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by staff and the planning and zoning commission.
Second.
Motion, second to approve item number 23, with standard and special conditions as approved by the commission and staff, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, we've got hearing ordinance number 23, 20, excuse me, I keep doing that, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, along with ordinance number 202011, resolutions number 202019, 20, 21 and 22, what's the board?
I move to approve. Move to close the public hearing and approve those items.
Second.
Motion, second to close the public hearing and approve the item 24 through 28, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, item number 23, they've, they've asked for, to continue to the board supervisors meeting of April 22nd, or 21st?
29, item 29.
What did I say?
23.
Keep doing that, all right, item 29, thank you, Mr. Supervisor Christie, so we'll go ahead, without objection, we'll go ahead and continue, item number 29, to the board supervisors meeting of April 21st, 2020, moving on to the addendum agenda, board supervisors sitting as other boards, flood control district board, item number four.
Move the item.
Motion, second to approve item number four, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, moving on to grants, management and innovation, item number seven and eight, and resolutions number 202023, 202024.
Move the items.
Motion, second to approve item number seven and eight, and their accompanying resolutions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, moving on to office emergency management and homeland security, item number nine, designation of agent resolution and resolution number 2020-25, what's the board?
Move the item.
Motion, second to approve the item and the accompanying resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, let's see here, would anyone have an objection to moving the rest of the agenda? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move item 10 through 19.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay, ayes have it, the board not having any business before it, this meeting does stand adjourned.